All right, wonderful. So apologies for that, everyone. So with all that said, why don't we go ahead and start tonight's meeting? So with that, we'll open the January nineteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the West Boylston Zoning Board of Appeals. With me this evening, we have a full board of all five full members of the board, myself, Chris Olson. The vice chair is Baro Rajesh Kumar. We also have Nate Orsiani, Dave Femia, and John Benson on the line. So let's get, let's get right to the first agenda topic, which, which will be very brief.
Chris?
I'm sure the petition.
Chris, can I stop you?
Yes, go ahead, Raj.
Hold on, I think Dave has some problem. Hi, Dave. Why don't you restart? Restart, we are just, you know, Chris is just doing it. Yeah, okay. Okay.
Yeah, so while he restarts, why don't we, we can go through the minutes. We can likely get through them with just the four of us in the meantime. So for the first item on the agenda, excuse me, let me just pull up my agenda here. So the minutes for our last meeting, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. I certainly had no comments. They looked fine to me. If, if, if board members have comments, now's the time to make them. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So mode.
A motion to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Back to.
Okay, second from Nate. Thank you. Any comments? Minutes? Hearing none. Okay, we'll do a voice vote then. I'll just go across the screen here in the order of folks on the screen. Raj, your vote, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Nate, your vote?
Yes.
John, your vote?
Yes, although I wasn't there for that meeting, but.
Would you like to abstain?
It doesn't matter. I, whichever works for the chair, I'll either vote to approve or abstain.
All right, that's.
Certainly have no objection to him, so I guess I can approve.
That sounds like an approval to me. Perfect. And Dave, if we have you back, I'll, I'll give you an opportunity to opine. Okay, hearing none. So Dave is in, is an abstention. I guess what we'll mark it down is that. I mean, yes, as well. So that's four to zero, Toby. The, the minutes are approved. With Dave abstaining from the vote. And then maybe I'll just give Dave one minute to, to restart his computer before we start the, the continued public hearing. This would be nice to have all five of us.
Dave, can you hear us?
I saw a message that he left, so I don't know if he's connected.
We can, we can give him a minute. I mean, this is, this is a special permit, public hearing. I, I think it's, it's important to have all five of us hear the entire contents of the hearings.
He came in a bit late, I don't know where he is. Dave, is that you?
No.
Well, it looks like you froze again. Can you hear us? Would it be wise for Dave to call in? That's, that's an interesting question. Raj, is, is that a possibility for him to call in without video? I mean, I presume it is.
This is Jennifer Curzon, attorney for the petitioner. The, on your agenda notice, there was a phone number you can just call in on. I just wanted to let the chair know that.
Thank you. Yeah, exactly. So I, if, if his, if we can't get his computer to work, I would think that that's our best option here.
Normally, he will have no problem.
Yeah, this, this hasn't happened before.
Today, he may be having some problems. Sorry for that.
Raj, did you suggest that he calls in?
It's not picking up.
Okay.
I tried twice.
Maybe send in the text. Dave, is that you?
Yeah, that's me, finally.
Seems to be working now. Good evening, sir. You?
Good evening.
Excellent. Beautiful. So we've got you, we've got you, we can hear you, and we've got you in living color. Perfect. Excellent. All right. So Dave, just, just so you're aware, we already voted on and approved the minutes for last month for, for the last meeting. So we're going to move right to the, the continued public hearing. So Toby, at seven twenty, we will open the continued public hearing. As the board will remember, we've already read into the record the public notice for this meeting. So, so I, I don't think we, we need to do that now. So maybe with that, what I'll do is it just sort of remind everybody of the ground rules, how, how we, how we run these meetings with this board, and then turn it over to the petitioner for them to, to give their presentation. But just quickly, so just to refresh everybody's memory, what we, how we generally hold these meetings is we'll first give the, give the podium over to the petitioner for them to make their presentation, to make clear what it is that they're requesting and the information that they're providing to the board. If the board members have questions, they can ask them to the petitioner. Once the, the petitioner's presentation is over, I may also then ask for input from the building inspector, George Teegner, who I, I can see is, is called in as well. And we may also ask him questions if there, if there are points of clarification that, that might be helpful. And then if there are, after that, if there are, we'll open it up to any questions or comments from the public. Obviously, this is a public hearing. That's generally how we tend to run these things. And maybe with that, I will turn it over to Attorney Curzon to begin. And we can go from there, except for one thing. Dave, you had one comment? Go ahead.
Yes, the comment is, is that I'm not sure how much I'm going to be able to, how I would be able to vote tonight on this petition. For the simple fact is, is that nine hours before this meeting is when we got the traffic study. I have not really had a chance to sit down and review it in complete details, so I may not be able to vote tonight. I just want you and the board and, and the petitioner to understand that.
Okay, yeah, so we'll, we'll keep that in mind. Let, let's see how we get on this evening and, and we'll go from there. So with that, Attorney Curzon, the, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Olson, and thank you to all of the committee members. My name's Jennifer Curzon. I'm the attorney for the petitioner, Cam Hospitality's LLC. I believe that Carol McAdams, who is the general partner for the, for Cam Hospitality, should be on the call or on, within the meeting tonight. I'm also with, with petitioner is Bill Scully, who is the professional engineer, traffic engineer, Stephen Gallo, who worked closely with HS and T and in completing the site plan, and Robert Gallo, who is the general, the general manager for the owner, Classic Suites LLC. We're here before the board for a special permit specifically under three point two schedule of the Use Regulations subsection F four, fast foods and drive, drive-in restaurants. We're requesting a special permit from basically a prior use of a building at one eighty-one West Boylston Street that was a, originally, way back when, was originally the entrance for a Howard Johnson's. It had been built out for office use, and then it was decided by the petitioner was, wanted to do a upscale cafe restaurant, coffee shop with a drive-through. And a little background, we filed this back on ten, October third, along the petition, along with the applicable forms in the zoning interpretation request form that was completed by the zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Teegner, requiring us to come forward and request the special permit. Along with that petition and the, all of the applicable forms and the abuser's notice and abuser's list, we also have submitted, updated, an updated site plan, which you all should have a copy of, which is, was originally dated seven twenty-two oh two, then was revised November twenty-three, and the last revision was one twelve twenty twenty-three. There was also a building floor plan, which is dated twelve twenty-eight oh two, and then finally, there is the traffic plan, which is dated, I believe, one seventeen twenty-three. Finally, there is a January eighteen, twenty twenty-three traffic report that was likewise filed. On this, just in case the board members just didn't have any background, what happened originally was we were in front of the planning board for informal site plan review, and at that time, the petitioner and the owner had brought up the fact that the regulations from the, from these zoning regulations that required site plan review didn't come into play here because the amount of parking spaces that are on this site for the coffee shop, and that's how I will refer to the cafe, coffee, restaurant, I'm going to just call it the coffee shop, in fact, had only fourteen spaces. Under the regulations applicable for site plan review, you have to have fifteen spaces. There's four other ways you can get into site plan review, none of which come even close to, to what we have here. So that's why at the informal site plan review, it was decided, including in conjunction with the planning board, that site plan review was not necessary, and then we started the process with the building inspector coming out to look at the property and then deeming that we had to get the special permit. So what had happened was we filed it on ten three. It was set for hearing on eleven fifteen. However, in the interim, there was a letter that came out from Chairperson Mills for the planning board that I believe was dated October thirteen. That letter I responded to formally on December seventh, because although it was dated, it was dated the, the fourteenth of October, we didn't get it, meaning the petitioner and the owner didn't get a copy of it till, I think it was twenty-four hours before the hearing that was set, which really wasn't enough time for me to adequately respond to it. So there was a letter December seventh that I wrote in response to all of the issues that were brought out by the chair of the planning board. And if the, the zoning board would like me to go through that, I will. I'm, I believe that the, every member on the board should have a copy of my letter responding, because I'm pretty sure that everyone on the zoning board was CC'd on my letter, or else maybe Toby might afford it, but I, I know that I had CC'd every member of the board. So there were issues that were brought up with regard to the, the site plan that was dated from seven twenty-two, and as a result, we ended up changing the site plan, addressing the issues. But at that time, in the letter, the big thing that was brought up was the traffic, the need to have a traffic engineer review the proposed drive-through. The, the chair of the planning board thought that the way it was set up really was, the way it was set up, the fact that there wasn't anything from a traffic engineer, that there really should be one. So we did, in fact, retain the traffic engine, engineering firm, and they submitted, as I said, the, their report, and I apologize for the late time that you got it. That was, unfortunately, there was nothing we could do about it. This was pretty, it was pretty comprehensive, as you will see if you look at it. So we did address that, and we addressed the other issues in the site plan. And as I said, those are specifically set forth in my letter from twelve seven. There's seven items that are at the bottom of that letter on page two, and they are, they go through, I go through each one on the pages three, on page three. So if the board has any questions with regard to that, I will bring that up. I don't want to have to go through it now unless the board members want me to, and I will do that. The second thing, and I, we can come back to that. The second thing was that the chair of CONCOM had likewise set forth, I believe it was around November fifth, November thirteenth, had sent an email to the chair of the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, and regarding conservation issues, and those issues were all addressed in a correspondence sent on November sixteenth via email to the board members, as well as the chair of the Zoning Board of Appeals, the chair of CONCOM, and the chair of the planning board from the, from the Scott Morrison, Senior Environmental Scientist at Echotech. And those were all addressed. Subsequent to these, both of these letters, one from myself, one from Echotech, we didn't hear anything back from either Chairman Mills with regard to the letter that I addressed to, directly to her issues, or to the chair, or from the chair of CONCOM. So I'm guessing that those were adequately addressed. Finally, the, the site plan, as I said, as a result of Chairman Mills's correspondence, was in fact changed, and the, the seating for the interior of the cafe, coffee shop was also changed. We went from forty seats to thirty-two, and that is, so there's thirty-two, twenty on the exterior and twelve on the interior. The building plan, which was submitted, has the specifics on, the building is nine hundred square feet, the patio is three hundred and eight square feet. The proposed seating, again, is thirty-two. That requires fourteen spaces. There are eight spaces in the front and six in the back, which is in the motel parking lot, and you will see that on the site plan and on the traffic plan. Included is a single handicap spot with a five-foot accessible ramp side, five feet on the side for them to get in and out from the handicap spot, which is the requirement under the ADA. And under the ADA, you have to have one handicap spot for each twenty-five spaces. So that has been, that has been provided for. And the, as I said, the traffic, the traffic issues were all addressed. The, the traffic issue, which was just an issue in terms of we needed to have a engineer do the, a traffic review. That was addressed again by Kim Lee and Horn, specifically Bill Scully, who was on the call tonight. And there is a, I believe it's seven pages total report that was submitted this morning that goes through. Oh, I'm sorry, is, it, they conducted a traffic circulation review for the Cafe Bistro. They go through the existing conditions. Also, a review of the proposed site plan layout, both from the original seven twenty-two amended, eleven twenty-three, and then subsequently amended in conjunction with the traffic engineer on one twelve twenty-three. And they also looked at the current site plan revisions from one twelve twenty-three, and then they did an estimate of site trip activity, which appears on the second full paragraph of page four, and then there is a conclusion. And what I would do now, unless the members have any questions for me, is put Bill Scully on the meeting so that he can just give a, an overview of what was done and what the findings were from what was done on the traffic review. Thank you.
So just before that, are there questions, board members, at this point?
Yes.
Hey, Dave?
Okay, the attorney mentioned about the, the letter that came from the Conservation Commission, okay? So I've read the letter that came from the chair of the, of the COMCOM, Mr. Chase, that was dated November thirteenth. There were some questions, some issues that he had. On November sixteen, Echotech Inc. sent out a letter, and if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, I have both of them side by side, and if I'm reading it correctly, all the things, the things that Mr. Chase had mentioned is not mentioned to what you're going to do from Echotech. So I'm just wondering.
Can I respond?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. So if you look at Echotech's last paragraph, they, they said they assessed the wetland resource area. So there was a physical, the Echotech went and physically looked at the site in the vicinity of the site, determined if a conservation, conservation commission application is required. And their conclusion in the last two sentences of that letter is the proposed project is located in excess of two hundred feet from the nearest buffer zone or resource area. No work is proposed within jurisdictional areas on the site. Therefore, the proposed project is not regulated under the Wetlands Protec, Wetlands Protection Act, and no Conservation Commission review is needed. And what Chairman Chase was saying was all related to, if, all related to issues that would come up if, in fact, it was regulated under the Wetlands Protection Act. The only one that was not is his last question, which was, from the town's point of view, you're going to need to know whether Mass DOT would allow a contiguous entry and exit onto their highway if this project goes through. That's the only part of it that wasn't related to wetlands protection. However, we spoke with the head of, Mr. Gallo spoke with the head of DOT for Worcester County, and who confirmed that this was not a public high, public highway that would come in, come in and affect egress or exit for a permit by the Mass DOT, the Highway Division. Does that?
Press? No.
Okay.
I'm looking, I'm looking at the letter, and specifically, what they wanted to know was more information about the parking materials, such as the regarding pavement and stone, et cetera, and the drainage, how it's going to be and what we'll be doing with the sheet water that will be going onto the state highway. They need to know the hydrology of the project in more detail. Okay? This is all part of conservation. You know, where is this water going? And none of that was, as far as I'm reading, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm not reading the Echotech's, you know, letter correctly, but I don't see any of that, you know, addressed. So, I mean.
So just with regard to the, with regard to the pavement, if you look at Mr., if you look at the Echotech letter, November sixteenth, the second paragraph, it says, "The building will be renovated with no proposed expansion. The existing access to the site and, and existing pavement will be utilized to the extent possible." So it's going to be pavement. And then if you look on the site plan, there is additional pavement that's being proposed, so it's all asphalt. And that is on the site plan at, it shows, I think it was a total of twelve hundred extra square feet in terms of the pavement, and that was, in fact, pavement. It's on the site plan at, at the back of the coffee shop. It's the proposed concrete sidewalk, and there is the note at the top, at the very top of the note with the leader, meaning an arrow, saying pavement to be added three hundred and twenty-four square feet plus or minus.
Okay. But he also said in his letter that they need to know the hydrology of the project, okay? And as I'm reading it, the branch of science concerned with the properties of earth's water, and especially its movement in relation to land. You know, I really don't know. I wish Mr. Chase was, was on the call, but you know, one of the things that we are, we're required to do is when someone sends us a petition, we need to send it to the planning board, the Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health. They, they make responses to us. What I'm saying is, is that I don't see any of Mr. Chase's comments being addressed other than what you said, but I don't understand in, in this thing about the hydrology and I need to know whether Mass DOT would allow a contiguous entry and exit onto the highway if this project goes through. Have you talked to Mass DOT? Are they going to allow that?
Yes, no, yes, they were. That, the, the head of the Highway Division for Mass DOT in Worcester, Mr. Gallo, who should be on the line, spoke with them.
I'm here.
Yeah, and they confirmed, in fact, that it wasn't a state highway, so there wouldn't be any permitting issues, so there wouldn't be an egress or ex, an egress or entrance issue, and that's what, that, that is what the chair of CONCOM was referencing. With respect to hydrology, it's, it was our understanding from reading, and it was because it came from the chair of the CONCOM, is that CONCOM's main purpose in, and this is every CONCOM in every city or town in Massachusetts, is, oh, I'm sorry, is, in fact, they come into play on wetlands protect, if, if the Wetlands Protection Act comes into effect. And in this, in that, and that's the hydrology in terms of wetlands protection would, would, would bring up hydrology. So that is the only thing I can tell you in terms of the comment by the chair and, and our conclusion that it has been addressed because that would be, that would be the Wetlands Protection Act, which isn't impacted by the, this project.
Did you receive anything in writing from Mass OD, Mass DOT?
Can I comment on this?
Yeah, Mr. Gallo.
Yeah, please.
I spoke, I spoke with the OD, and so I believe Bill Scully also, we are, we both checked into this. We are not altering it, we're not changing, we're not doing any work on, on the, the entrance. The entrance is existing. Everything you see on that plan, except for that crossover lateral, connecting the two lots, is existing. Any, there is no new hydrology to be considered, and I was informed that any work, first of all, if it wasn't within forty feet of the center line, wouldn't be affected, and we're definitely not doing anything there. It's all existing. The only thing we're doing is painting. So that, he told me there was no permit necessary. I think Bill Scully will back that up, too. As far as the con, conservation, we're not affected by conservation. We're not within the two hundred feet buffer of any filing, and we're not changing the hydrology. Those parking spaces exist. The only thing we're changing is that one lateral, three hundred square feet, and you probably have close to an acre of pavement there or more, maybe two acres. It's minimal.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else I can, certainly will.
Thank you. So what I wanted to do at this time was just kind of maybe take a step back from the discussion, you know, about respected drainage and with respect to traffic. I just wanted to sort of zoom a little bit, just talk about the procedure, I think, in this, in this case, a little bit. I, I think it'll be helpful. I think maybe it'll provide a bit of context here. So with respect to procedure, so I, I think it's, it's absolutely appropriate that you are here before this board requesting a special permit for, for the, the drive-through that, that you're asking for. Because you're absolutely right, under the, the current zoning bylaws, you, you do have to get a special permit from this board for that drive-through. And then there's this other issue mentioned about site plan review with, with the planning board. And, and again, you correctly identified that our zoning bylaws have certain triggers for, for site plan review, certainly. Now, so, but as it pertains to those triggers, I also agree with you that I think there was one of those in particular.
Mr. Chairman.
That seems most relevant here. Raj, yes, go ahead.
Can I, can you request others to mute the audio? They are not speaking.
Absolutely.
I can hear you very disturbance nice.
Yeah, so if folks are on a telephone or, or actually on Zoom for that matter, however you're connecting, if you can mute. Yeah, so i- if folks are on a telephone or, or actually on Zoom for that matter, however you're connecting, if you can mute your line, unless, unless, uh, the Chair recognizes you, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Yep. Uh, and as I was saying about the, uh, the site plan review process, according to the, the town's zoning bylaws, there does seem to be one trigger that, that, uh, is, 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 uh, relevant here, which was, I think, the, the one that Attorney Curzon highlighted, the, the, the change of use involving fifteen or more spaces. Um, and so that, then, then the question becomes, well, under the zoning bylaws, to me, this, this, this definitely does sound like a change of use of that building. And so that, that's why that seems sort of relevant to look into. Now, when I look at the zoning bylaws, section five point two, uh, in particular subsection B, that talks about the, the parking requirements, um, for a drive-through, for example, and for a restaurant, for example. So a couple of things, uh, that, that, uh, that sort of, um, occurred to me as, as I was going through that zoning bylaw in the context of this particular petition, what is, was that it seems like there are at least two sections. Um, one for a restaurant, so that's subsection H, and, and also for a drive-in establishment, subsection I, that seemed to apply here in the context of calculating the amount of parking spaces that are involved with this petition. So in particular, um, the one, I, I think you mentioned the one about the restaurant where you need a certain amount of spaces uh, for every four seats, uh, that, that are in the restaurant, that, that's section H, and I, and I, and that sounds, uh, that sounds accurate to me. But so what I'm also looking at is that subsection I, drive-in establishment, where it requires one space for each forty square feet of gross floor area. And Attorney Curzon, I, I noted that you mentioned earlier in your presentation that the, at least the, the interior square footage is nine hundred square feet. And according to this, this section of the bylaw, section five point two BI, in order to get up to fifteen spaces, that would require, um, a gross floor area of six hundred square feet, whi- which this building exceeds. So the, the, I don't know if you have a different interpretation here, I'm certainly willing to listen to it, but by my initial review, it looks like because of the drive-in establishment and that subsection five point two B one I, that, uh, more than fifteen spaces are involved here, which would mean that in order to, um, to seek the, the zoning relief, uh, that you're looking for, the, uh, for this particular project, you are right to come to this board, you would need a special permit for the drive-in, but you would also need to get approval, uh, through site plan review from the planning board in order to do that. Um, so let me, let me just, uh, open that up, uh, to Attorney Curzon, see if you have comments on that, because that's, that's currently how I'm, how I'm, I'm viewing this, I'm, how I'm understanding this project.
So for the, um, for subsection I, because I don't have it in front of me, can you just, if the Chair could be so kind as to just re- read that again in terms of is it gross square footage of the, or is it the floor, is it's, I know it's floor space, but I, I have to know what that definition was, because we did discuss that. I mean, that petitioner did.
Yeah, so I, the, it's a one sentence, and it says one parking space for each forty square feet of gross floor area.
Okay. Um, Stephen Gallo is on the line, and I think that he might be able to, I don't know if he will or he won't, um, be able to address that, because I know we did look at, we did look at gross floor area, um, and what that encompassed in terms of, and whether it was the nine hundred square feet was subsumed within that, or whether it was smaller. My recall was that it was smaller, um, that it was six hundred, it was around six thirty-four. I don't know if Mr., if Stephen Gallo can remember that, if he's still on the line. I don't think he is.
Oh, I am.
I'm here.
I'd like to, I'd like to.
Oh, well, or Mr. Robert Gallo, yes.
Uh, we looked at that gross area. I mean, I've built restaurants, quite a few of them, and all parking generally is generated by tables, uh, seating area, not by, not by square footage. Uh, I think gross area is, well, what are we considering? The bathrooms, the kitchen, uh, the working area? Uh, what is the gross area? There's an, there's no definition. So, um, if you're looking at it from that point, we certainly wouldn't be considered the, uh, the basement area. What, what that would have to do with seating, I have no idea. Uh, gross area really, uh, has nothing to do with seating in most designs. We use, uh, parking to, uh, correspond to tables and seating areas, and that's what we've done here. Uh, to get the gross area, I mean, that's just another interpretation you could use, uh, but it has nothing to do with your actual seating and, and your parking either. So we use, we use the, uh, four seats per table. And, uh, that's how we derived where we are, which, uh, you'd have to redefine that word gross, what it determines. I mean, it could only be, if it's only the work, the seating area of the restaurant, it wouldn't even be three hundred, it'd be way under three hundred.
Yeah, and u- u- understood, I understand your comments. Um, uh, again, I'm just looking at the bylaw and, and I mean, the bylaw, obviously, a- as you will understand, that's what we have to go by. We may not.
Yeah, we looked at, yeah, we looked at that, which, and we, you know, we, we try to conform to, oh, we've done this before in, in, uh, many instances, and we always, we always go to, uh, table area and seating, uh, to determine parking and, uh, never gross area. I mean, uh, what is gross area? Do you want to consider the actual seating area that's gross area? I mean, we had trouble defining it.
Yeah, so a- again, I mean, I, I don't, I, I can tell you this, so gross floor area to me, uh, would seem to include the, uh, interior space and the patio, though there also is, if you look in, I don't know if you have in front of you, but I, I can mention the, the section of the bylaw. So again, this is section five point two, section, subsection B, and then right under subsection B, there's a sub, sub subsection one where there's a note, and it says utility, energy, corridor, stairway, restroom, and building maintenance areas are exempted from space assignment. So you could potentially remove the square footage for a restroom, uh, for utility room, like, that kind of a thing. But outside of that, um, the, the way I read the bylaw is the rest of that space would count. And so, I mean, so, I mean, there, there may be some square footage there that you can subtract. I know I was looking at the, uh, at the building plan before. I know you've got room in there for a bathroom and some other things. Those could be removed. However, the, the way I was looking at the building plan, I don't see how you can get basically down below that six hundred square foot, um, threshold for site plan review. And part of the reason.
One question I have.
Go ahead.
One question I have, as you mentioned about the, uh, the patio, gross area of the restaurant wouldn't be, wouldn't be the, uh, the outside area, it could be grass, it could be, it could be, uh, the patio, it's just a put pavers down. It wouldn't be part of the gross area of the restaurant itself. And if you do take the, do the math on what you're suggesting, uh, I think it's gonna be pretty close to six hundred square feet, uh, or less. Uh, maybe even less than six hundred. I think the, uh, you take the bathrooms out of there, the storage areas, uh, you head down to an area that's probably gonna be, uh, I would say fourteen by, uh, twenty-eight maximum, and that would put you at fourteen by twenty-eight, uh, less than, uh, four hundred square feet. And that's the actual usable area of that interior. And that's why we actually went to the seating again, which is what we use mostly uh, on all these restaurants we've designed and have lived with. Uh, so that's where we came to our conclusion, but like I said, if you take all that out of there too, you're way under the figures. I mean, the building is only twenty-eight by twenty-eight. I'm sorry, it's the ten by ten I put on, I forgot about that little section, but that's our work area and storage.
Yep, so, so what I'm looking at, I hope folks can see this, I'm trying to share my screen with the, the building plan, okay? And so you can see up in the top left corner is that calculation of, of, uh, your calculation, total interior space, nine hundred square feet, the patio, three hundred and eight square feet for a total of one thousand two hundred and eight square feet, okay? Now, just under that subsection I, drive-in establishment, as it pertains to the S, uh, site plan review, um, trigger, uh, the magic number there, so to speak, to get up to fifteen spaces is six hundred square feet. So you would have to remove roughly half of, of, of the space that we're, that we're talking about here. Um, and again, I'm just looking at the, the building plan. You've obviously, you've got a restroom there, um, you've got storage, um, but, it, it just, the way I'm looking at it, it doesn't look to me like you can remove half of that, uh, gross area um, to, to get down below that, below that threshold, uh, the, again, the, the way I'm looking at it, so. And the other thing that I would mention is generally, I mean, the way, the way these things have worked in other types of, you know, arguably similar projects in town, for example, the one just across the street from you, the Cumberland Farms, another one that comes to mind is Clinton Savings Bank. Those are just two examples of projects in town where they were required both to get a special permit from this board and to go through the site plan review process, uh, with the planning board. Uh, and so, I mean, that, that's, that's how this looks like to me. I don't know if other board members have, have comments, um, about that, but, um, that's, that, that's the way I'm understanding this currently.
Hey, Chris?
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, um, with what you, in regards to what you said, I just have a question as far as, okay, I under, I see that, that the, uh, the attorney, uh, had sent out a letter to both um, planning board, the Chair of the Planning Board and Chair of the ZBA on the seventh of December. And reading through this, it sounds like that no site plan review was, is required or was required. Um, if that's the case, did we ever receive anything from the planning board talking about this letters on December seventh from the, the attorney specifically? I mean, did they agree with that and say, okay, you don't, you don't need site plan review, just go to, go to the ZBA?
I don't, it seems like ambiguity that, from, from my perspective, but I, I, I would just say this, um, to the petitioner and, and to the, the other board members, under our bylaws, it's not, the, it's not the planning board's discretion to decide whether there is site plan review required or not, but rather it's, it's the bylaw that controls. And I'm looking at the bylaw, I'm reading the bylaw for the, for the trigger, because that's what the planning, I mean, that's what the, uh, the, the town bylaw requires us to do. So irrespective of any, I mean, I, 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 I think I, I understand that you met with the site, with the, the planning board, and they may have, uh, suggested or intimated that they, um, weren't sure or, or didn't think that site plan review was required here. I understand that, and I appreciate the effort, uh, that you went ahead and, and did that. But nevertheless, the fact remains is, it's, it's the bylaw here that controls it, so i- it's not something that is up to planning board discretion. It's, i- i- it's what the, it's what the, the bylaw says, and so I'm just trying to apply that bylaw to this case here. And I'm looking at this building plan, and I'm seeing clearly over six hundred square feet of, of, uh, gross floor area. So that, that's, that's why I'm coming to this conclusion.
You know, we, excuse me, this is just a second. Now, we kind of got blindsided with that number, and if we were going to, uh, cont- uh, configure and, uh, reconfigure the amount of square footage in there, we could do that and subtract out the storage areas, utility areas, uh, restrooms, staircases, et cetera. And it probably will be, cause I, I'm, the only area that I see that's receding, like I said, the building was originally twenty-eight by twenty-eight. So if you take, okay, half of it, which it will be in the end, because the other half is gonna be for storage and, uh, kitchen, basically, uh, you've only got fourteen by, um, twenty-eight that you're working with as your seating area. And you can see that the way our, uh, seating plan is laid in there, that's what we're utilizing, the fourteen by twenty-eight, uh, which is, um, gonna give you, uh, two eighty and, uh, not even four hundred square feet. So, uh, I don't think the patio gets loaded.
Yeah, if I can just jump in there, there, there's, there's nothing in the bylaw which allows you to, as far as I can see, to remove the square footage for, say, the kitchen, for example. I mean, it's, i- i- the size of the building is the size of the building, and yeah, y- you're allowed to, you know, um, subtract stairways and restrooms and that kind of a thing, but to me, i- i- you're not gonna be able to reconfigure the building to reduce the, 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 the gross storage area and, and get under that, that, that six hundred feet. I, I just, I don't see how that's possible with, the building is the size that the building is. And it's a, it's, it's a drive-in, so I, 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 I just personally, I, I don't see how that's gonna change the, uh, the, the outcome. Other board members can feel free to disagree.
Well, I think if, I think if we, uh, took a look at it from that angle, uh, maybe yes, maybe no, but we didn't look at it from that point. We looked at it from seating. And we looked at the bylaw and went by the, the amount of seat, uh, tables we have in the seating. So, uh, that usually covers the fourteen. I'd like to also say that, uh, we have plenty of parking in this area. I mean, we're not, we don't have to add any parking. Uh, we have plenty for the restaurant and the hotel, and we have additional parking if we had to. We could lease right next door to it, but, uh, we own both properties. And we have more parking on the other side, uh, next to the, the mill. But, uh, we, uh, even before a site plan, it's not gonna, we're not gonna be adding any pavement. We're not gonna change anything. So I guess you could use either part of the bylaw. Do you want to use the bylaw for seating, or do you want to use the bylaw for the square footage? Uh, do you think they both retain?
Now, u- u- under our bylaw, i- i- if, if you're, if you're requesting a drive-in and you're requesting restaurant, then you, you add those two together to find the total number of parking spaces that are involved here. So I mean, so that's, that's something else, uh, you know, certainly to be cognizant of. I mean, I'd say, you know, if, if this is, I, I know you mentioned that, that you've considered this in the past. I'd certainly be willing, uh, you know, i- in view of this discussion that we're having tonight. I don't know how the other board members feel about this, but I would certainly be willing to allow you to sort of go back, see what you can do, uh, and, and propose, you know, a potential change and, and, and see what happens here, but, um, I, I, I just don't know how that would, uh, you know, i- impact the result here, given the uses that are being requested, most specifically the drive-in establishment or drive-through, however you want to call it, and the restaurant use with, with, with a certain number of, uh, tables and chairs. I mean, those are the two sort of, uh, parking-related issues, uh, that, that, uh, that jump out in my mind when, when I look at this part of the bylaw.
No, I, I can appreciate that, and, uh, if you're gonna be using, uh, the most stringent one of them, then we want to wear that, but, uh, and that would be probably the square footage, but we can take a look at that also and get an actual count on that and see where we are and, um, what it triggers. And, uh, if a site plan was necessary, review. Uh, like I said before, under fifteen, we're not adding anything to this parking lot. This parking lot exists. And the only thing we do is paint lines on it. And that, we can add spaces, uh, depending on the size of the, uh, the spaces, believe it or not. Um, and we're not adding any pavement except for that crossover, so I mean, we can go to site plan review, I mean, but it's just, uh, I think just a step isn't necessary, that's all.
Yep, I, I, I understood, and, and, and that's, I think, the, the question, uh, that, that we, that we as the board, we want to make sure we're get right, because one of the requirements that we have to look at in, uh, granting a special permit is whether the proposal, um, is consistent and, and meets all the, the requirements of the bylaw. And so, so obviously, this is one uh, that, that we want to make sure that we get right, because under, under law, we're, we're required to do so. Uh, so we, we want to get this right.
If you're gonna be, you're gonna hold us, uh, to the most stringent, uh, definition, then we'd like to, we'll withdraw and take a look at our square footage and see, uh, if, where we are with this entirely. And see if we conform to the, uh, five hundred and sixty square feet, which would be the fourteen spaces, I guess. Uh, and see what we have. I mean, the interior of that restaurant is only like three fifty, at the most four hundred. So, uh, I don't, I don't believe the patio would be considered in your bylaw. But we can withdraw it if you, I mean, if that's gonna be the case, and we'll come back again and fight another day.
Yeah, I think he means he'll continue it and not withdraw it.
Yeah, that's, well, continue is fine. That's, that's what I was suggesting. Uh, and we will take a good look at that square footage, because now we're using two standards. So we will look at the, the more stringent standard.
So, I mean, I mean, because the other issue too here is, is whether or not site plan review with the planning board is required. So, I mean, I mean, because the other issue too here is, is whether or not site plan review with the planning board is required. All of the same issues need to be considered, it's, it's just a question of which board needs to review it, whether it's our board. Or whether it's uh, the planning board that's going to review all these issues, issues of parking, issues of drainage. Issues of, you know, uh, traffic flow. All of these things, it's, it's, they're going to be reviewed one way or the other, in addition to that, the, the building inspector will be looking at these things. So to me, uh, it's, it's, it's less about who's reviewing these, these issues and just making sure. That they are reviewed correctly, um, and, and in accordance with the bylaw. And again, my experience, I haven't been on this board that long, maybe, I don't know, four or five years at this point, that there's other board members that have, that have been on this board longer than I have. But I can say, I mean, generally, when we see these types of um. Uh, petitions, again, in, in, in the last four or five years that I've been on the board, generally, these are the types of things. Uh, the, the, the types of requests um, that do need approval uh, from. This board for the special permit for the drive-in, but then also um. The uh, the, the planning board for, for site print review, just becau, and and by the way, they're the ones that generally handle. You know, also, you know, drainage issues and and they'll deal with um. Um, you, you know, in, in engineer uh, that, that can help, help them work through that, uh, these things, they are generally the board in town. Who handles these issues, so you might actually have. An easier time getting through some of these issues. Um, with the planning board, because they're frankly, sort of more, more familiar with, with the details. Of these kinds of uh, plans and issues in my experience, again, I'm not speaking for, for other board members, but. Um, it's, I think it's, it's just, it's something to consider, I mean, the bottom line is all of these issues are going to be looked at by someone. Uh, before we can grant the, the, the zoning relief uh, that you're seeking here for this project, it's just a question of figuring out under the bylaws. Um, who are the particular boards that, that are uh, supposed to be doing that?
So, so just so I understand, so what the chair is saying is that we would first have to get this, if in fact, site plan review was required. We would have to get site, go in front of the planning board before we would do the petition before the um, zoning board of appeals.
Well, I mean, so it, 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 it's a good question, um, let me stop sharing here. Um, but to, to answer your question, I would say, so there's nothing in the bylaws, there's nothing in our procedure in town. That requires you have to go to one board before the other, but i- if, if you need, you know, multiple uh, types of zoning relief for, for, from different boards. So the fact that you filed with us first, that's fine, there's no issue with that. Um, we, we've, we've certainly handled these kinds of things in the past, we've also handled things where people went to the planning board first. Uh, so I don't think really that's the issue, I think the, uh, the, so for example. If it does turn out um, that uh, the planning board uh, needs to be involved for site plan review purposes. We can handle that, I think, from my perspective. Uh, a number of different ways, just, just a couple that come to mind is, we could continue for, for a month or two. To allow you to sort of catch up file with that other board. Uh, you could, I mean, I suppose if you wanted to, you can, you could consider a withdrawal and 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 refile later in the future. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that, but I, it's also sort of your choice, um, you, you're, you're, um, you as the petitioner or in the driver's seat as far as. Exactly how you go about seeking the relief that it is that, that, that you're asking for. Uh, but as far as this board is concerned. Um, if it turns out that I think site plan review with the planning board is required, which right now, I, I. It seems to me that, that it, it, it probably is. Um, I would have no problem, for example, continuing this hearing for a month or two months or, or for, however, just to get that process started. And then that process can actually help inform and I think make this process before this board. Much more streamlined, much more uh, clear and frankly, much, much easier. Um, so I, 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 I would mention that, again, if other board members from, from their experience have comments, uh, please mention them now, but that's. That's, that's my uh, um, that's my position, I would say, I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does.
I think, I, and I think we'd be wise to uh, continue it. And we'll take a good look at the uh, the square footage since we're being held by that standard. And see uh, what the bylaw reads and what's included, I mean, as far as storage is concerned and. Restrooms and staircases, I'm sure aren't in there, and uh. What is left in the end of it all, uh, and what we need. Uh, we have plenty of parking, if you need three more spaces, there's no problem finding parking in that lot. And we're not changing anything, you keep mentioning hydraulics, we're not adding anything, we're not changing, it's all existing. So uh, if anyone is to tell me that I'm going to get back into hydraulic calculations on an entire parking lot that's been there for thirty years. Or longer, uh, we would just walk, because that would be ludicrous. Uh, the parking lot is there, it's been there for thirty years, it has its own drainage system. Uh, we're not changing it. So I keep hearing the word hydraulics, I keep hearing CONCOM, CONCOM has nothing to do with this. And um, need to do hydraulics.
Yep.
So I think while we're, while we're talking about is, is, how do we have fourteen spaces, or do we need seventeen? And I'm getting a little ludicrous there, but we will go back and look at it and uh, see how we can conform to the most stringent requirement.
So, yeah, just, just a couple of uh, couple of comments there, so, so one is the bylaw. Um, it, it's not triggered by the number of new parking spaces that are required. It's just triggered by the number of parking spaces that are involved or pertain to the new use or, or the, the change of use. So even if you don't have to add a single parking space. You still may be required to go through site plan review because it involves fifteen spaces, okay? That's the way the, the zoning bylaw is written, and and that's the way it's been interpreted for years. Not just here, but for, for everybody else that's coming in this board, uh, as, as long as I've been on it. So that's, that's just, um, you know, we didn't write the zoning bylaw, it is what it is, and we have to go with it. Uh, as to your second question about sort of the hydrology and the parking and that there's plenty of parking. I don't disagree with any of that. Um, and, you know, assuming that all that's true, and I have no reason to think that, that that's not true. But assuming that's true, all that means is. Uh, that, if, if in the likelihood that you end up going through the site plan review process with the planning board, it just means it, it's going to be that much smoother. Uh, because to your point, uh, you, um. There, you, you're not going to be digging things up and you, you're not going to be changing things. Uh, but nevertheless, um, some type of, of that review uh, ha- has, has to go, has to go on here, again, under our bylaws, so. We're just trying to follow those.
Sure, and I can appreciate that, and you've got to appreciate the fact that we also are following your bylaws. And we came there tonight with our traffic study, our traffic engineer. Uh, our plan, our site plan, and to the best of our knowledge, the proper parking. Uh, when you look at the, like I said, I, I, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here. Uh, if you're going to say that the second standard is going to have to be applicable. Well, then that changes things around, so we would, uh, we would. Want to uh, continue the meeting, we'll go back to take a look at what you've got. And if, if it, if we can't get away from the fifteen, sixteen spaces, and there is no other alternative. I guess if we want to improve a building in your town, we're going to have to go forward. But uh, with the planning board, so I think we should uh, continue the meeting, since it seems like you're, you're not going to change your mind on whether or not we need. Forty square feet, uh, one parking space per, per four seats. So, I think Jen could, could, could continue.
Yep, so y- and your, your comments are, are well taken, so thank you for those, and and just to be clear. Um, again, uh, uh, you probably don't have it in front of you, but I, I'm just mentioning it just, just for the, uh, for, for clarity. Under that five point two B one, it does mention. That multiple uses require space calculations for each use, so. Um, so basically, what does that mean in this case? In this case, it means. So for this site, in order to figure out the total number of spaces that are used or, or that, that are required for, for, for this lot. Because it is one lot, I know it's shared with, with uh, classic suites. So there's, there's sort of two calculations as I see it. One is, what's the total number of spaces that that lot needs? When you include the motel parking that's required and when you include um, these uh, th- this proposal here with the, with the, with the coffee shop. Um, now, as just, but as to the coffee shop as well, when you're trying to come up with that calculation for. Um, triggering site plan review, again, the, the standard is whether it involves fifteen or more spaces. And in, in, in this case, the calculation would be the sum of. That one space for each forty square feet of gross floor area, so that's the drive-in subsection I. But it, it would be the sum of that number and also having one space uh, for each four seats. Uh, in the dining area. Um, so it's, it's, it's both of those things added together, and I would also just mention in the, so that subsection H that talks about the restaurant. There's also language in there that talks about potentially one parking space for every two seats. Where meals are not served or where meals are self-service, so I, I don't want you to be. Um, um, to be sort of uh, surprised by that either, so I, I guess I would say. I'm happy to sort of continue the hearing so that you can take a closer look at this, but I would want you to be sure. That you're taking a close look at that subsection H and subsection I. And that we're looking at, or certainly as I read it, we're looking at the sum of those two numbers. If they equal fifteen or more, that's a site plan review trigger for the planning board.
If I could just ask, oh, I'm sorry.
I have a question, Jen, an important one, uh, you mentioned uh, the forty square feet and the, the uh. The requirement per table seating, uh, so one for four seats.
Yes.
As being a sum of the two. I, I don't see it that, I see it as the sum of the one, maybe the most stringent one, but not the two of them added together.
So.
Yeah, that was my question.
So that's why there's a, there's a statement uh, right under five point two B one. Multiple use requires space calculations for each applicable use. Okay? Um. And there, there may be actually another place where it says that.
Well, the only applicable uses there is the motel and the uh, and the coffee shop and the restaurant. So I mean, the, 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 we, we, we accounted for these parking spaces for the hotel.
Yes.
Per room, and we accounted for the spaces uh, for the coffee shop, but. I don't see up multiple uses for the co, for the restaurant, is, there's only one use, it's a restaurant.
It, it's the restaurant seating and it's the drive-in, there, there are requirements for both, and they are added together.
Are you saying that uh, when you add up the table seating and the square footage, that you put them both together and come up with a total amount of parking spaces?
A, a, a total amount of parking spaces involved in this change of use, yes.
So, uh, uh, just, just to clarify, if we had six hundred square feet on the interior, we would require fifteen spaces. And the fact that we have the uh, seating for thirty two, whatever, we would require another eight. So you have eight, so we would either go with the sixteen or the eight, you're saying you're going to need twenty four.
Correct, that's exactly right.
But it's multiple use.
That's right, because y- you're proposing a restaurant and you're proposing a drive-in, under our bylaws, those are two separate uses.
Well, it's on the drive-in, it's a, it's a takeout window, which in this day and age is very uh, applicable with the. People aren't going into restaurants almost every afternoon, they're picking up, so I think it's a very practical method of doing it. And uh, not just because of COVID, and also I don't consider it two uses, that becomes a problem.
Oh, oh, just, just hang on one second here, all, all I'm trying to make clear is, this is the same standard we've held to many other businesses in town in the past. Uh, so we're trying to keep one standard for everybody in, in town, so it's fair, it's the same for everybody. Uh, this is, this is no different, again, from. Um, you know, other places in town, uh, Clinton Savings Bank is one that comes to mind, Raj, you have a, a comment, go ahead.
I, I think, and I totally agree with the chair. So they do like to be, this uh, ma, continue this. So let them go through the, my, my thing is, you know, instead of wait, uh, wasting our time. As well as uh, teaching the bylaws, so they do have their attorney. So let them, you know, take their own time, let them figure it out. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it certainly seems perfectly reasonable to. Go ahead.
I agree with them, the only, the only thing I disagree about is, is the multiple use and the additional spaces, uh, because you have a drive. So, uh, not drive-through, but a pass-through.
I, I totally agree, I totally agree, you have your attorney, maybe you can discuss with her. And then, you know, we can uh, uh, talk about this uh, in the next meeting.
We'll do that, sir, we'll do that.
Thank you.
In the meantime, yeah, put the, put a official in uh, continuance for thirty days and uh. We'll draw back and take a look.
Okay. I think though, Mr. Stephen Gallo had one comment just to make, and then that would be it.
Okay, uh, comment from Mr. Gallo, go ahead.
Yeah, I was waving my hand, I guess you couldn't see me, I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse here, I just want to say. Um, I had an email from Jennifer stating that she had spoken to George Tigner, who told us to use the seating. For the calculation for the spaces, so that's what we did, also, um, in my experience. You would never use two different um. Bylaws to measure seating capacity for the same space, it's one or the other, so. My thought is that it's probably tables. Um, in the seating area, and then the rest of the building would be calculated with the forty square feet. Uh, excluding the areas you mentioned. But I, to, to say you would calculate both and then add them together makes absolutely no sense to me. I've never seen anything like that, and I know George is on, on this, on this call here, I'd be curious to hear what he would say.
So I just wanted to, I was going to say what Stephen just said, um, the, so I. Um, and with this, with all due respect to what the chair was saying, and I understand that this is the uniform manner in which the city has been applying it. Um, but this, this, the language did come, I, I looked and read the language, and so what I did was I went back to the building inspector, Mr. Tigner. And I probably apologize if I'm saying that incorrectly, to get clarification on it, because. There were also the two different definitions, as the chair is very, um, very much pointed out, with regard to fast food versus restaurant. Um, and I wanted to know what, what, what we were supposed to do, so in, in conjunction with communication, I believe I have an email. From Mr. Tigner confirming this, he told me that for purposes of the interior, we should just use. The calculation for a restaurant as defined in the section, um, within the subsection H. So that is, in fact, why that was done. Um, I understand what the chair is saying currently, and I think that, you know, I, I agree, maybe we should have a thirty day continuance. So that I can provide some case law in terms of how language like this has been calculated, because in my experience, and again, this is no disrespect. To the chair, I understand you're very, you're very well learned in, on these areas, but this has never been where you added. Them together, where it's cumulative of both utilizing the same space, because under that calculation. Um, you would use the four chairs as one calculation and then add it to the, um, what is it, forty square feet? For the second calculation, plus for each, and that's, that's superfluous, because then you have. You have, you're utilizing the two numbers together, when in fact, it should only be one of them. So if it would be applicable space, so if the part of the restaurant was just dedicated to fast food, for example. Then that would be calculated using the fast food aspect, and then if the other part was just de- dedicated to a restaurant. However, that would be defined, then you would just use that for the, the calculation for a restaurant, but you, I've never seen a situation. Where you've added them, typically, it's what Mr. Robert Gallo said initially, that you would take. One of the two in terms of which is the, and usually that would be in the definition, you take one of the two and, 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 and applying it, and I did. Get clarification from the building inspector on that, thank you.
Yep, thank you for that, uh, again, your points are well taken, I would just say, if you're going to dig into the case law on this issue.
Right.
Uh, I mean, issues that we've come up in the past is. Oftentimes, you know, the case law that we found in other cases, not exactly on point with, with the specific bylaws that, that, that we have to go over. So just, again, one thing that I would highlight that may be peculiar in, in the West Boylston zoning bylaws, I don't know, but. Whether it's peculiar or not, it's there, and, and one thing that is there, again, I'll point it out to you, is five point two. Section B. Subsection one, there's a sentence in there, multiple use requires space calculations for each applicable use. And that is, uh, historically, in my experience, it's always been interpreted at, as when there are multiple uses under our bylaws. You add those uses together to get to the total number of, of spaces that are required, either for purposes of construction or for purposes. either for purposes of construction or for purposes of triggering site plan review. So and I will note that under our bylaws, a restaurant use and drive-in use are two distinct uses under our bio. One requires a special permit, one does not. So under our bylaws, I think it's clear, these are two separate uses. But again, please, i- if there's case law on point here that would help us out, I'd be more than happy to, to read it, absolutely, particularly if it's, you know, obviously relevant to, to this particular case. So I, I would certainly welcome that. So, so let, let's do this then. Because I'm certainly in favor of continuing this for, for at least thirty days, so that you can look into this issue. That seems perfectly fine to me. One of the things I would do, just because, again, I know the building inspector's on the line. If he has any comments, I want to offer him an opportunity to speak. And then I'd also just also like to open it up if any members of the public would like to speak before we do consider the, the, a motion to continue here. So maybe just with that, the building inspector, Mr. Tignor, if you have any comments, sir, please, go ahead.
I, I agree with the chairman on this, on calc, on that calculation. As far as what I had told the attorney at the time, I will have to go back and look at my notes because I don't remember exactly what the question was or exactly what I had said to you in that letter. I don't have those in front of me. So I would have to look that up. I don't really have any comment on that at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I have just one, I have this in part, yeah, look, and I, I think this is one thing to add to your method of calculating the parking using the two uses. The takeout window, the drive-in, whatever you want to define it as, is a takeout window. And you're driving to pick it up. It's part of the parking, part of the access and the, how would you divide the, your building? You say, okay, forty square feet, well, what's, what is the takeout and what is the restaurant? And that would become a major problem, I think, for determining the area. Because you said it's two different uses, well, there has to be two different uses inside. So I don't agree with that. I think it's one use, I think it's a restaurant use, and I just think that one, either one standard applies, not the two bylaws. The two, one of the bylaws can apply, but not both. And maybe you're going to have to tell us how to, how to, a big figure, what's, what goes with the takeout and what goes with the restaurant? Since they're both the same area, they're both the same cooks, they're both the same kitchen. Are you following me here?
Yep.
Yeah, so.
What, I mean.
So I don't see.
One, one point I do want to stress is however this calculation ultimately comes out, it has no impact on how this review is going to go down. All it's impacting is who is doing the review, whether it's this board or another board. But all of these issues that have been raised today and and others are still going to be reviewed regardless of, of what this, this calculation ends up being. So I I don't want to overstate the, the importance here of this. Because I, I, I don't see it being sort of determinative as to whether or not you're, you're ultimately successful in obtaining the, the relief that you, that you're seeking here. I don't think it's, you know, it's, it, it's, you know, that significant of an issue. It's just a question of who is the proper board to, to hear, you know, particular issues. So I mean, that's, that's, that's really what we're talking about here. And now, maybe with that, if there are any members of the public who would like to make any comments before we continue, before we consider continuing this hearing, please, go ahead. You can unmute your phone, state your name and your address, and you can mention your comment. Okay, hearing none. So that being the case, if there are any other comments from board members, I'd be happy. Go ahead.
Chris?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, I agree with the chair. The zoning bylaw is a zoning bylaw, and if it stays, then the both of these are two separate entities and they have to be, you know, combined together, then so be it. The second point is, I'm not in favor of continuing. I think this has been going on long enough. The third thing is, if the board does choose to continue this, I do not, and there is some case law that the attorney finds, I do not want this presented nine hours before the meeting is scheduled. Okay, like the, like the trial report was. And that's all I have to say right now.
Okay. Dave, y- you, you mentioned a good point. So a, a attorney, Karzah, one question I have for you is since we are, it looks like we are going to consider a, a, a motion to continue here. We'll see how that works out in a minute. But if we are going to continue it, say, for thirty days, with this, this legal research that you're talking about doing, would you be able to get that done and, and get us, you know, any results or, or any you know, review of the case law, you know, say, ten days before the next hearing, or would you want more time than that?
If I can just have seven days before the next hearing to, to submit it, because what you're, the date of your hearing is the second or third Thursday of the month? Is it the second or third? I'm sorry.
Or Thursday of the month, so the next.
Yes, ten days, ten days is fine then. I can do that, absolutely. And I apologize for the late submission. I, I didn't, I don't draft things of that sort, so, but I, I'm in charge. I will be the one submitting, so I can easily get it to you ten days beforehand.
Okay, so ten, just, just to be clear, ten days before.
Your next hearing.
February meeting would be Monday, February sixth. Would you be able to get us?
Absolutely.
By February sixth?
Yes, I will.
Okay. So that being the case then, if there are no other comments from the board, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to continue this hearing to February sixteenth at seven O M. It would be another Zoom hearing, just, just, just for, for clarity. It would be another remote hearing like we're doing just now.
I shall move.
Okay, we have a motion from John. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Nate. Any further comments before we vote? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a voice vote. Just go in the order on my screen here. Raj, your vote to continue.
I think yes. I'm reluctantly saying yes.
Okay. Nate, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. John, your vote?
Yes.
Okay. Dave, your vote?
No.
No, okay. And my vote is a yes. So Toby, that's four to one. The motion carries. The, the hearing is continued until February sixteenth at seven oh five P M, at which we will, we will reconvene via Zoom remotely. Attorney Karzah and, and your team, thank you very much. And we, yeah, and we look forward to, to, to getting your, any of your further comments by that Monday before, I think it was the sixth, as, as we mentioned, that would be really helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you very much. Bye now.
Well, thanks for pointing to, we will be working with you to get this figured out. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see here. So we have the continued hearing. I'm just, I'm just pulling up the agenda here. I don't think there's any other items that need to be addressed. Toby feels to, to let me know if there's anything else. I don't think there was any mail. The treasurer's report looked fine. There's nothing to note there.
No.
So if there's nothing else, then.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Dave. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nate. Thank you. We'll do a voice.
Can I be, before that enough?
Oh, yes, Raj.
I, I would like to congratulate Toby, receiving the town administrators' excellence award.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
That's a story, very well deserved. Toby, we'd be totally lost.
Congratulations, Toby.
Yeah, I was not able to make it to the, yesterday's meeting.
Thanks, everyone. And it's, it's been a pleasure working with all of you, so.
Excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you. And before you, before you, I just want to tell Toby, she did a hell of a job getting all that paperwork to us and in, in the order that it, that we had to get it and, you know, this thing about I, I, I just hope that they come back, that they have this information by the time that you ask them to, because if they don't, I'm going to make a motion right off the bat.
Sir.
To disapprove this.
They're, 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 they're.
No, I'm, I'm serious.
Please, hearing is done.
We, we will reconvene in February sixteenth. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Let's vote as to whether or not to adjourn. Raj, your vote?
Is that a tie?
Yes. Okay, Nate, your, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, John, your vote?
Yes.
Okay, Dave, your vote?
Is, is done.
Oh, yes?
He's done.
All right, well, my vote is a yes as well, so that's four to zero. We are adjourned. Gentlemen, Toby?
Have a nice weekend.
Good night, all.